No, it's stuff like that.
Right, right.
Ron, are you on there? You may get zero questions.
Yeah, I'm sure.
But just in case, rather be a front in front of you than behind you.
Yeah, yeah.
Like, I am freezing. I'm just sleeping.
Good evening. I'd like to call the regular board meeting of the Waterloo Community Schools Board of Education to order and ask that you join me in a moment of silence. Thank you, and will you please rise for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And now India will read our mission statement this evening.
The Waterloo Schools community commits to a comprehensive system of education and support to assure that each and every student will graduate prepared for college, career, and citizenship as evidenced by continued education, pursuing their career path, and contributing to a community.
Thanks, India.
You're welcome.
The first item on our agenda then this evening is the public hearing for the Hoover Middle School HVAC project. At this point, I would like to declare that hearing open and ask if there is anyone here this evening who wishes to address the board on the matter of the HVAC project. All right, well, seeing no one, then I would entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Some mood.
Thank you, Jesse, and a second.
Second.
Thank you, Sue. All those in favor of closing the public hearing on the Hoover Middle School HVAC project, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Chair votes aye, our hearing is closed. The next item on our agenda, actually this evening, is a new partnership recognition, and I'm going to ask that we push this back in our meeting a little bit. We are waiting for one of our partners, Ned, who can't be here, and once they are able to be here this evening, I'll just, we'll conclude the item that we're on and come back to that partnership recognition. So I'd ask the, the board's grace in doing that this evening, okay? All right, awesome. So then the next item on our agenda is information from individuals and delegations, and I would ask again if there is anyone here this evening who wishes to address the board? And if so, please come forward and state your name and address. All right, then seeing no one, we will move on to our consent agenda, which this evening consists of eight items. The minutes of the March eleventh, two thousand nineteen special board meeting and the March eleventh, two thousand nineteen regular board meeting, item C. The personnel appointments and adjustments, item D. Bills due and payable and bills paid between board meetings, item E. A donation from Veridian Credit Union, item F. The junior achievement memorandum of agreement for the two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty school year, item G. The Hoover Middle School HVAC project, item H. Graduation dates for the Waterloo Community School District High Schools, class of two thousand twenty, item I. And then the board meeting dates, which are item J. Are there any items that board members wish to have removed from the consent agenda?
Item F.
Item F.
Item H.
Item H. All right.
Maybe item I.
So that we make that public?
Yeah, item I. So then can I have a motion to place items C, D, E, G, and J on the table, please?
Some mood.
Second.
Second. All right, then all those in favor of approving the following items, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, same sign. Chair votes aye, motion carried. That takes us to item F, which is on page twenty-three. And... I never do this right, Pam. Thanks, Lyle, and is there a second?
Second.
Thanks, Jesse.
In discussion?
Yeah.
I just was very excited about this on here, and first I want to thank Veridian for the donation. It's awesome, and then I just wanted to get the word out there about what the, the middle school summer CTE camp is, what it, who can come, cost, you know, just anything that you can give us details on.
Yep, we too are very appreciative of, of the generous donation. The, the main thing was we wanted it affordable, so this is going to be free to all middle school students entering in the two thousand nineteen, twenty school year, grades six to eight. Open to, I mean, we've had Dunkerton reach out and, you know, middle schools, the only problem is-
So it's not just our kids?
Correct. So we're going to have to figure out a cap and kind of work around that.
How many kids do you think you might be able to accommodate?
I'm just working with instructors right now on that. It kind of depends on program, per program and those numbers. It can range anywhere from ten per session to probably thirty, I'm guessing. But the, the whole, the main reason for it was to expose the programs we have available out there to this age range, who maybe not, doesn't get as much exposure as the high school age students.
So it's entering sixth, entering seventh, and entering eighth?
Yep.
What's the timeframe? I mean, time of day?
Time of day, there's two sessions, one's nine thirty to twelve, and then twelve thirty to three.
And students who come would get exposure to ten different programs, is that what I heard, or how are we sitting on that?
It's probably less than ten right now, just with summer availability with some of the instructors, but we might have the culinary instructors on board, as well as John Deere, working with us on a STEM activity.
Well, students have to fill out an application, or they're going to be recommended by counselors, or how does that look?
They're going to have to fill out an application, which is currently being worked on.
Okay, great. Oh, cool.
Getting those applications, decided it's going to be all by paper, just in an effort to control the, the caps. And getting those to all of the middle school, elementary schools, word of mouth through the rest of the community, because I don't know how else to get that out besides social media.
And it's already been out on social media, I saw it come across too, so and I'm sure we'll send those home with parents and will, or with kids, and send them out, write probably emails or something like that, maybe?
We could do a printable, we could do a PDF on the website and then have it, you know, people could download it.
I saw it on social media before, saw it anywhere else, so.
We're hoping Andrew puts it on the front page with the courier.
Above the fold with a nice picture? Yeah, but with that being said, if we have to cap, do Waterloo students get preference, or?
Yeah.
So how many middle schools is it, are eligible?
All the surrounding and around here. All the Waterloo ones for sure, and any of the middle schools that have reached out.
Okay.
Probably have to make it so that it's first come.
Yeah.
By choice, because the students are going to have choice on the programs they want to sign up for, so they'll have their first, second, third choice.
So have you talked with Veridian about how that preference should be structured?
I mean- Not had a conversation with that, about that.
Preference on what?
Well, if it's oversubscribed, I mean, Veridian serves the whole Sierra Valley, and they're funding this, unless it's just a donation.
They're funding a portion of it.
A portion of it.
This, this isn't enough to cover the whole.
Okay.
And it will, will it be buses, like Waterloo school buses?
Yep.
And they also get a meal, right?
Yep, food will be provided, a lunch each day.
Great. You know, when it-
How far are the buses willing to, you said for surrounding areas, so are the buses, are we?
We've had one initial meeting and working with them to figure out the best places for pickup, based upon the people involved.
I think-
So if we go surrounding areas, is, was my question, you said surrounding area, other middle schools?
In district. Kathy's working on right now, I think she's going to run two route buses to pick kids up and then get them to the hubs of the three middle schools besides Central, because Central's the main point, so it's no sense running a bus to Central per se. But they'll run two route buses, get them to the three hub points, and then bus everybody from there in off the buses from the three middle schools, they have three other middle schools.
But are you talking about busing from Dunkerton and Waverly, that, okay, yeah, I just wanted to make sure.
I think they're asking outside people.
No, yeah. Nope. Yes, any student outside of the district would be responsible for that.
So to underscore what I think Lyle was saying, you know, when we think about summer camp, summer programming, and I think about the students that really could benefit from that. I know we saw, well, I, I witnessed over spring break, I know Rodney's Kitchen did free lunches for a lot of kids. And sadly, I noticed that a lot of the kids that I know could have benefited from that did not participate. I'm speaking specifically for racial minorities and low-income students. I mean, I saw a, a lot of participation, but I was sad to see that not a lot of students participated. Also, a couple months ago, I went to a, a community forum, and one of the things that came up was about, you know, there's nothing for our kids to do during the summer. Now, I know that, a lot of us who are parents, we, we know that, but that's because we kind of seek that, and we're, you know, India's at the library, so she knows a lot of summer programs and things like that. But also, I noticed that during the summer, a lot of the kids that could benefit from that summer programming, for whatever reason, they're not, they're not participating. And so I hope that we can figure out a way, because as Lyle mentioned, once we send that information out, and if you look at, if you look at the number of, of, let me see, how can I say this? If you look at the number of, of applications that will come back, I'm, I'm just thinking about parity, how can we do a better job to reach those students who really need to participate? Not that all students don't need to participate, but, but the ones that we have a difficult, the ones that we have a difficult time reaching. And I, I'm just thinking out loud, making a statement, we can talk later about how we can figure that out, but I just noticed that a lot of students that could benefit don't show up to some of these things. And it's not that, you know, as a district, we're not doing the best we can. Yeah, I, I, I don't know what else to say, but, you know.
As a minimum.
Right, 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 right.
As a minimum, if we're undersubscribed, perhaps that's when we double back and do a recruitment.
Mm-hmm, yep. I invite, yeah.
Well, you might think maybe the, some of the counselors maybe ought to help identify some kids and try to, try to help.
We could certainly contact the counselors at each of the four middle schools and say-
Yeah, they, they, they may be able to help say, why they picked this kid, or-
If you think this would be a great opportunity for students that you've identified that would benefit.
Even teachers.
Yeah, yeah, you could say, you get counselors to maybe the science, math teachers, the CTE teachers that, you know, project lead away and whatever's in the-
I guess terrific program. I suspect it'll be oversubscribed, but we'll see.
We have, yeah, I have one ready, ready for application, so.
Well, and at the root of it all, again, I just want to thank Veridian for doing this and the two of you for putting it together, and I know it's, it's one more thing to do in the summer when we're trying to do all of the, all the other stuff to get ready for the new year, but I think this would be a great way to kick off and highlight the stuff that's happening in the Career Center.
Hundred percent.
And I think keeping the excitement at fifth graders, you know, like, wow, they get to go to the big kids' school, and they get to do the school program.
This is incoming sixth. I may have two applicants now.
And I think Jeff and I really want to thank Amy for her work on, on this and other things, and, and maybe I'm stealing Jeff's thunder, maybe he was going to say something, but I think Amy has done some really amazing things. We have an upcoming signing day that maybe Amy could address super quickly, that doesn't have anything to do with the Veridian, the Veridian, yeah, it is a rabbit trail, but there, there's, you know, she's doing some really great things, and this, this summer camp is, I think, maybe perhaps a brainchild of hers, and so-
Honestly, I feel, I wasn't even going to stand here because, if Angela Weekly was here, because I honestly didn't have anything to do with either this or the signing day, so.
You get the benefit of that.
But I oversee the program, so I should.
Yeah.
All right, so signing day this Thursday at two o'clock at the Career Center in the collaboration room, room two, three, four. We're acknowledging all, well, not all, but seniors that have, are, I guess, committing to, whether it be college or the workplace. I think right now there are, we're at seventy-five kids. And basically just, you know, making them proud for their experiences and what they've gained out there, because a lot of it has a lot to do with their experiences at the, at the Career Center, so.
Thank you.
And you're all invited.
Yes.
Two o'clock, Thursday.
What was the time again?
Please go Facebook Live on that. Make sure you go Facebook Live on that, please.
Yes.
Facebook Live? Oh, I'm sure, I think Tara, well, I think Tara's the-
Well, Tara's the MC.
Isn't Ron Steele the MC now, or?
Tara's emceeing, Ron is giving a speech, and you and Ron are shaking hands.
Was that a secret?
You're giving a speech, awesome.
That we just blurted out? I don't think so. Maybe? Just delete the last ten seconds of tape. Never mind, someone will be presenting, Tara will be there, we will get it face, face-
We'll, we'll have Katrina there or some, or I will walk around like, I can do the Tara thing.
We'll get Facebook Live, whatever, whatever it takes.
A student to do it.
Right.
Put a student to do it.
Good point, because I wouldn't know how to do that.
I wouldn't need her.
All right. If there's not anything further, I would entertain a motion to, I would, with the motions on the table, all those, to approve the donation from Veridian Credit Union, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, same sign. Chair votes aye, motion carried. We gratefully accept the donation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next item on our agenda then is item H, this is the Hoover Middle School HVAC project, and the recommended motion is the Board of Education approve the Hoover Middle School HVAC project and publish a notice to bidders.
Some mood.
Thanks, Jesse, and a second.
Second.
India, thank you. And I know Jake's here. I don't know who pulled this, so.
I did.
Okay.
I have a question on the, the alternate.
Thanks, Jake, I didn't mean to call you out.
No problem.
What is the difference in the controls being provided and what's the potential savings from those?
The difference in the controls from the base bid to the alternate bid?
Yeah.
So the base bid is to leave the existing pneumatic controls, and the alternate bid is to provide new digital controls, so to upgrade to what we've been doing on more recent projects. So we're trying to eliminate the pneumatic controls from the building.
Jake, will you back up just quickly and introduce yourself for anybody here at, at the table that doesn't know who you are and that you're with Modus, can you just do that for me, please?
So I'm Jake Connor with Modus Engineering.
Thank you.
And a little more background, we did a study on the building back in January and looked at, put together a cost estimate for replacing all of the, the hydronic piping in Hoover Middle School. And then went through and did the, the plans and specs for what we outlined in the study.
So are the air handling units, are they single speed or are they dual speed or variable speed?
I believe they're constant speed right now. Constant speed, yep, and the units that we're talking about would be two air handlers for the auditorium, and then there's an air handler for the administration area on the east side of the building.
And they would be variable speed?
They would not be variable speed, no, no. So it would just be updating the control valves mainly. So the, the current, yeah, under the alternate bid.
How about, are you adding CO2 sensors to minimize the amount of outside air during off?
We are not.
Why? I mean, that's where the savings would come from, is it not?
It, it could provide additional savings, yes, but that wasn't in the scope, in the, the scope of the project.
So is the scope complete?
I guess it depends on what you're, on which view you're looking at it from. With, in talking through with Marty Metcalf from Facilities, the scope was to update the control valves, and that was what we, what we looked at in the study. It wasn't necessarily a full conversion of taking the air handlers from constant volume with how they're operating today. Excuse me, and actually changing how they operate, it was updating what's there to digital, so.
So would it be worthwhile for, for you to at least calculate the potential savings?
Could. That could be something that we further explore.
I, I would suggest that be done, and then if there's significant enough savings, then maybe expand the scope with the controls change.
Sure, yep.
If it's justified.
Okay, we can do that. Any other questions?
Because that's where the savings comes from, we only have a thousand hours of school out of eighty-seven hundred a year, so, you know.
Right, minimize your ventilation when, when you don't need it.
Eighty percent of the time, these buildings are basically unoccupied, and yet the controls, a lot of them provide for occupancy.
Right.
Amount of outside air, so. I, I, I think it's worth taking a look at it.
We can do that.
Are you, are you suggesting that we build that into the bid process, or that we just?
If, if the history look at the savings.
Okay. We didn't get down to that level with it, at least I didn't, I don't.
Yeah, the, the main part, the main scope of the project was updating how the units, the keeping how they currently operate and updating what's there, and not necessarily getting into how they operate. So that could be like in their alternate to that, right, basically? Add as alternate to the- Yeah, it could be an additional alternate to the one that we're already doing, so you kind of have two tiers of, how far do you take it? Yeah, that way when you see, you know, how much the adder is.
Have you, have you done CO2 monitors for other, in other applications?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
So you kind of know the results of?
Right.
What they would be.
Yeah, it, there, there definitely is a payback when you, when you go to that. We'd have to look at what other items we would have to modify in order to implement that, just in addition to actually adding the sensors.
But you're changing the pneumatic controlled valves out?
Correct. Yep.
And these will all, is there a central monitoring system that this all feeds into or not?
Yes.
On that system?
Yep.
Thanks, Jake, I just want to clarify too, that none of this is set in stone yet, we're just getting ready to put the notice out to bidders, and so for the board tonight, we're not making a decision about which way, which air handler flow and whether we're doing constant or any of that tonight. And Lyle, excellent point to bring it up, but I just want to make sure that everyone is on the same page with the fact that what we're doing tonight is approving the notice to bidders, and we'll make sure that Marty has that information, and Jake, you've now heard it from us as well, to, to look at that when we, whether we do a second alternate or how we proceed with that, so.
And with the schedule that we have laid out right now, with approval tonight, we were going to send it out for bid on Wednesday, following the notice to bidders, but that's something that we can get in by addendum, if we don't have a chance to get it in by Wednesday.
Okay, that'd be great.
Yep.
All right. Excellent, anything else for Jake? Thanks for coming up, I appreciate it. All right, then all those in favor of approving the Hoover Middle School HVAC project out to bid, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, same sign. Chair votes aye, motion carried. That takes us then to item I, which is on page thirty, and this is actually for information only, so there isn't even a, there isn't even a motion to approve. But I think Sue made an excellent point of wanting to highlight for our public the fact that we are setting the graduation dates for not this spring, but the following spring of two thousand twenty. So Expo Alternative Learning Center will graduate on Thursday, May twenty-first at six PM. On two thousand twenty, yes, May twenty-first on, on, in two thousand twenty, yeah, I thought I said two thousand twenty, did I not? And West High School will graduate on Friday, May twenty-second of two thousand twenty, and East High School will graduate on Tuesday, May twenty-sixth of two thousand twenty. So those three times are out there, and you can know that they will be on our calendar going forward.
And they're all at six PM, and so if you have a junior in high school, you know now when they will graduate.
Yes, yes.
Yes, right.
Right.
Book your spot.
Book your spots, write it in pen, write it in pen, yes. All right, so those are the two thousand twenty graduation dates again. All right, that concludes our consent agenda for the evening. The next item on our agenda is item K, and this is item on page thirty-three, and this is the Greenbrier Parking Lot renovation bid approval, and the recommended motion is that the Board of Education accept the recommendation from ISG Architects and approve the low bid from Lodge Construction Incorporated in the amount of four hundred twenty-three thousand dollars for the Greenbrier Parking Lot renovation project.
Some mood.
Thanks, Sue, and a second?
Second.
Thanks, India, and questions? I know Dan Channer's here this evening.
Yeah.
Dan, would you mind coming up, thank you, now that I've called you out again?
Dan Channer, ISG Architects.
So this requires retention?
Yes.
And about how much of the total bid is for the retention?
I haven't broken it down that well, Al. I can get that for you.
Just roughly? Third, half?
Um... Maybe a quarter. There's a lot of concrete in this particular project.
What was the square footage, you happen to remember that?
I don't.
Okay. And then, on the engineered fill? Uh, what's your expectations on?
We're not really expecting to have to do anything, it's just there so that we have a price if we run into it.
Okay, because the break-even point between Lodge and Peterson, given the big difference in engineered fill, would be six hundred fifty cubic yards, if there's that much, then the Peterson becomes a low bid. But you don't expect that much?
I don't expect that much.
Okay.
And Dan, I just want to highlight, not, not for you specifically, but for our, our viewers, anybody who knows the Greenbrier, Brier Parking Lot knows how much this parking surface is needed there. It's, it's very wet and very muddy, if you've been there anytime recently, it's in pretty much the same state as a lot of our gravel roads, and so this is, this is really going to allow us better access to that building, which we use a great deal.
Yep.
So I'm, I'm thrilled that we're going to be able to get it paved and that we had multiple bids. It's, it's definitely a project that's worth doing, for sure.
And it's very, very flat.
Yes. And I would just add, Greenbrier, actually, the capacity to use it as a training center, there's, Dr. Mohorn uses it probably more than anybody with the staff, but we can serve a hundred and twenty people there in a, in a, any training session, and so sometimes you try to add, you know, even fifty cars there, and it's treacherous. Matter of fact, we said several of us have to go out tomorrow, and somebody said, good luck, so this is a very welcomed project, and we thank you for approving it.
How many parking spots will this provide?
Off the top of my head, I can't say, I can go look on the drawings.
Could you just send me that information, please?
When does this project start? I'm sorry, I didn't hear that.
Dan, do you have a date for project beginning?
Uh, so, um, we need to have a pre-con meeting- Uh, so, um, we need to, uh, have a pre-con meeting with, uh, Lodge Construction. Where Marty and I will sit down, we have the schedule for the facility now. Um, so then it probably, pretty much depends on mother nature.
Right, how much rain we get?
Yep.
But it will be completed?
The intent is to be complete August second, I believe it is.
And I just, just your opinion on, I was very excited to see five bidders on this, do you think that maybe it was a smaller project, or what maybe, or slower? Or what's the enticement? I mean, that's great, we have five people to choose from.
Mm-hmm. I'm not sure I understand the question.
Like, I guess, why would you think this would be a five bid project? Like, why, just?
What was the draw?
Yeah.
Why do?
For, for this particular project, um, it's a reasonably sized paving project for someone, so. Um, pretty nice to have one in the bag and ready to go.
All right, anything further for Dan? Dan, don't go anywhere, stay right there, cause we've got one more, but anything further on the Greenbrier Parking? All right, then seeing none, all those in favor of approving the Greenbrier Parking Lot Renovation Bid, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, same sign. Chair votes aye, motion carried. The next item on our agenda then is item L, this is on page thirty-six, and this is the Technology Office Lot Parking Bid. And the recommended motion is that the Board of Education accept the recommendation from ISG Architects and approve the low bid from Lodge Construction Incorporated in the amount of one hundred sixty-six thousand five hundred dollars for the Technology Office Parking Lot Renovation Project. Thanks Sue, and a second?
Second.
Thanks Jesse, end discussion.
Uh, same questions on this one, uh, again, the difference in unit price on the fill, so. Are you expecting no fill, or?
No. I, I think we're, I think we're in pretty good shape.
Okay.
Again, it's just there as a, we want to know what it is ahead of time, uh, what they're gonna charge us if we need it.
Okay. And the same way with the side book?
Yes.
And does this include retention or not?
Yes, it does, it's underground detention.
Is that broken out, or did you just bid on this one?
It's not broken out. Um, I haven't, uh, seen a scheduled values yet. Once I get that, I can, uh, break it out.
And then the same question as to how many parking spots this will provide?
If I remember, it's twenty-three, but I will get you that information as well, Al.
Okay.
And I want to echo the same thing to our IT staff, and that parking lot also has rock and mostly mud. Currently, and, uh, I know I've been there in the wintertime, and it's, uh, again, uh, this is a really welcome project for our staff. And for, um, you know, we've waited and put it off many times, and so I'm really glad that we're gonna get this done, because this parking lot is also in need of it.
For our viewers, where is the location of that?
Blackhawk Street.
Blackhawk. Red Cross from the bus garage.
Fifteenth and Blackhawk.
Is this our first contract with Lodge?
It is to my knowledge.
So you'll be, who supervises construction?
From?
Who's responsible for the quality of the construction?
Well, the contractor is responsible for that. If you're asking who will be watching them, uh.
That's what I'm asking.
Brent Jackman out of, from Hall and Hall Engineering, our consultant on the project.
Okay, so it's under your?
Yes.
Ospices?
Hmm.
Okay.
Thank you.
And I'd wager that Marty will be on site now and again.
Yeah?
Yep. All right, is there anything further for Dan then on this? All right, then seeing none, all those in favor of approving?
Thanks Dan.
What'd you say? Oh, I'm sorry. All those in favor of approving the Technology Office Parking Lot Renovation Bid, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, same sign. Chair votes aye, motion carried. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, the next item on our agenda are these policy changes, and there are nineteen, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen of them on here this evening. And, um, Tara is not here with us, um, she will be back at our next meeting. And so I would urge if anybody on the board has questions, uh, before our second reading of these policies, to reach out to Tara, or to me, or Kingsley? Or anybody else? That we can answer those. And we certainly can answer them tonight if there's any questions.
I think, uh, athletic transfer rule five ten point five on page forty-five. Accent, page forty-six. One of the items in the upper paragraph, it says, unless one of the exceptions listed below. See that, it's one, two, three, four, five, the sixth line down.
What page am I on?
On page forty-six. Okay, so normally you would accept, you would expect to see somewhere below that, exceptions. And I don't see any of those. I mean, there's guidelines, but that seems to be a little bit confusing.
Well, look at that.
Well, yeah, and I think maybe it would, you could either use exceptions or guidelines.
If those are the exceptions, it wasn't clear to me those are the.
It's not identified as such.
Yeah.
But then.
Unless one of the guidelines was.
At least whatever word you use in there, up above needs to be used in the heading.
Yeah, I would do.
Okay.
And then on this, um, it's the one for Wednesday evening activities. And we talked, um, quite a bit about this, Esther and Kingsley were there also. And, um, we had kind of brought up that we thought six o'clock was better. And so, um, just kind of wanted to get the feel of other board members, what they thought of, um, that Wednesday night activity policy. We did, um, some of the, um, districts in our conference don't have any guidelines for Wednesday, they don't observe that at all. Others do, six, six-thirty. So, um, we were just wondering, I did call three different churches, and they do have programming that started between six-thirty and seven. So I guess I just, um, don't wanna have a barrier for a kid that if wants to go to church, can't go to church. Because they have practice, would be one of the reasonings that I had. Now I know, um, Dan Huff had talked about the, um, gym time was so hard in the winter to get gym time. And, um, so those were just different areas we touched. So I just kind of wondered what maybe Rondo and Lyle, Shemlee, Jesse, India thought of it?
I'm gonna go back to the point you made about other districts who don't have it. So approximately, any particular reason why they didn't choose to have a po, proposed policy to say, to restrict it at all?
I, I don't know, I could have Dan check into that further, but it just, I think was just, they had not ever probably, or in the past, near future, past, near, past, whatever.
For us or for them, for their district?
Yes.
For their district.
We're at five-thirty now, right?
No. Six, I just said six, but then they were gonna change it to six-thirty.
So is there a benefit to having it or not having it?
Yeah.
I.
I'm not necessarily, it's not necessarily directed to you, but is there a benefit of having it and not having it on a Wednesday night? I'm just curious.
I think ultimately what Dan, hello? Ultimately what Dan was trying to do is have a conversation with churches in the area. What I think Sue is alluding to, or, um, Director Flynn is alluding to, was ultimately that, um, other school districts just don't have that.
Right.
Um, particular policy. If you have a particular event that you need to go to in regards to church or other things, you would just request for that time with your coach, or whatever the case may be.
I totally agree. No, I'm, I'm just gonna say I totally agree with that.
I, I kind of do too, because I mean, there's nothing that says that somebody couldn't have a programming on Thursday night versus Wednesday night. I mean, you could have, you know, depending on what, and we're so diverse now, and with, you know, a lot of different backgrounds. It, having one day designated when another child might be, they might need Tuesday off, so.
Wednesday's still.
That was, that was the, I, I actually brought the question up, um, about what other districts do have them. Do, you know, do the Wednesday early hour for practices. And when Dan, um, looked, there's only one district that doesn't. Of the ones he checked.
Yeah.
Um, and he just checked the surrounding areas of, basically the Mississippi Valley Conference, um, schools. And there's only one that doesn't have it at all. Uh, so I'm not sure if they had it prior to, or why not.
Do they have it? Are they all Wednesday night?
Yes.
That's still traditional church night, I think.
And the six o'clock time is a change, I'm trying to understand, I can't tell on here, here it says five-thirty, I thought.
Right.
Proposed six-fifteen, the new.
The new?
This says six-thirty.
This says six-thirty. Right. Trying to get to the.
I, I think I can clear this up, so, um, when I talked with Dan Huff, who's the district athletic director, he said that in the fall and the spring, when the, when it's a little bit light, a little bit longer, that they do five-thirty, um, in the fall, and in, or in the fall and then the spring. But during the winter seasons, it is six-thirty. So the proposal was just to make it everything six-thirty, because a portion of the year, the, the Wednesday night, uh, practices needed to be finished by six-thirty. So instead of having it by season, that fall and spring were six, five-thirty, and winter was six-thirty, the proposal was just to make it consistent throughout the year, that all coaches would be done by six-thirty. I think what Sue is, is, uh, expressing is the, the viewpoints of some of the committee members saying, maybe we should look at six-fifteen if activities that, you know, and, and this is really an attempt by our district to collaborate with our faith, faith-based community. Um, so that's, that's really the, the origination of this, of this, if, if there were any, uh, faith-based, or other activities for that matter. But, um, I think that the, or, uh, origination of this, if you go way back, I don't know how many, how many years this policy has been in place for districts, Waterloo and other districts, but I believe it's been in nineteen eighty. So it's, it's, it's been decades that this has been, it really has been a partnership with that, and so it was just a way of, say, a policy is a policy. And so if the school board policy says six-thirty, then six-thirty it is. And so coaches, you know, sometimes you're like, oh, I'm just about done, what if we go till quarter till? Well, this is the, this is the way to kind of draw that line in the sand. So that's a little bit of the history to this.
Well, that also provides the continuity across, and there's no questioning, it's, I like the idea of having it be consistent throughout the year and not change. I think that's kind of hard for people sometimes.
So currently the proposal was six-thirty across the year, but I think the committee, the policy review committee, did throw around six o'clock. I think they threw around six-fifteen as a potential option, as if, if six-thirty was a time when, um, churches started, or, or activities started, six-fifteen. But that would be a change then for the winter season, you need to know that, cause right now, in the winter season, it does say six-thirty. So we're shortening it even more if you made it six-fifteen consistently.
I think six-fifteen makes sense, if, if the, you know, a number, cause we have quite a few partners in education that are part of the faith, faith-based community. So I think we need to respect that, and if some of them are starting at six-thirty, that gives us, you know, they may be a little late, but that gives them at least a decent chance of.
Well, and I think what, um, I've had a couple parents say to me is that, that is the one night that typically they know they don't have anything. If they don't go to a faith-based, they don't have anything, but because we don't schedule games on Wednesday, school district games. We don't schedule band concerts on Wednesdays, we don't schedule reading nights on Wednesday. Wednesday typically was the day that you knew that you could have time with your child, children, whatever, if you chose to go to church. If you chose to just catch up on the week, you know, that type of thing. But Wednesday was more of an open night.
Aren't you on share, Esther, what you got there?
I think we did revise it to six-fifteen, but I'll go check, I did take some notes, um, so I'll check. But the email that Dan Huff sent, said six-fifteen for high school, and four-forty-five for middle school for all year round.
Okay, it's first, yeah. So we can get that, we don't, we're not approving that tonight, so it will be on our agenda in two weeks to approve, so we can get that. That's why we do this, because obviously, uh, Lyle had a suggestion about changing the wording on, so we're consistent on that too, so.
Well, to answer your, um, question Sue, cause it's kind of confusing to me. And, um, I'm one that believes in the separation of church and state, but I also, um, appreciate, um, just like we need physical well-being, being, we need spiritual well-being as well. I think anything that does not have a disparate impact on any group, if that answers your question. So I don't know about the six-fifteen versus the six-thirty, as long as it doesn't have a disparate in, impact, and we're being equal across the board with, with all faiths. That's my answer.
Yeah, I, I would, I would think that you respect coaches, you know, to respect, you know, if you have kids that need other time off, that are similar but different days, that they would, you know, allow that, you know. We don't really have a set policy there, but you know, is there a expectation of? Of something there?
And we did talk about that too, but you have to, eh, the, I guess, the, um, what would be, the courage of the person to stand up and say, I need to leave for this purpose. We, we kind of didn't want to put that on a student that, as an excuse, because they couldn't.
No, I, I don't think, I think it's more of, I think, make, make sure that coaches have understanding of, of being flexible to that means, you know.
I, I think, I think our district currently has policies where, where we, you know, respect people's, yeah.
Going back to the athletic transfer, it says each middle school. Five-one-oh point, point five, I'm on page forty-five. It says each middle and senior high school shall designate one person to verify student addresses and address changes. Isn't this part? Of the central administrat, I mean, don't we have the address? So, why would each school be, I guess I'm just wondering, and, and are we, are we the school district totally responsible? Are there, you know, other organizations, whether it be the mail sys, or other government entities that know where people live?
Really what this means is part of the registration process, so we actually ask families to verify where they live. Because it design, it, uh, designates where their attendance center would be, so every middle school has, and usually it is somebody in the guidance office, the registrar, who would do that. So in every building, and this is middle school and high school, because that's where these athletic policies would, would be in play. We actually do that at elementary, so every person, I, I provide that for my children when I register them, that I show a proof of address. Uh, Dr. Mohorn does, we, we all do, so. That's what this is just saying, that we would go back and look at that. Sometimes there is a question of where somebody lives, and so we do have district office staff who would work to verify that, and we have done that on, on occasion.
Oh, so this verify is simply looking at the stated records?
It, it, it would, but it also could be more than that, Lyle. It could be, uh, it could be, you know, going out and talking to the family or whatever. So there are, there are parameters in the law that would require us to, to do that, especially if there are questions in play that possibly, uh, a person is not residing at the address that they are using in order to play on at a particular school. So yes, that is, that is true.
And then if I'm reading this right, a student from, I don't know, Waverly moves into the Waterloo District, they still have the ninety day?
That's state law.
State law.
Okay. Even if they move in during the summer, yeah?
Yep.
Even if they transfer from another school.
Cause if Karen's got a job with another city.
That seems.
Everybody plays by that law. And you can't, I mean, in summertime, it has to be that number of days, it has to be school days, you can't have the summer.
Yeah.
If you're.
It's, it's actual school.
So do we need to break it to have legal standing to challenge it? Or can we just challenge it? Or can we just challenge it?
I mean, yeah. Well, that was a change from before, because it was, um, it wasn't ninety days, had to be.
I think it was a year.
And that's ninety days, if I remember correctly, ninety days of varsity competition.
Yep.
You can still do JV.
You can do JV.
You can do JV, but you can't do varsity for the ninety days.
Yep. And it, and it doesn't, it crosses multiple sports too. So you have to sit out, you know, if, if you're, if you transfer mid-season, you have to wait even into the next, whatever it is, you know, if it was a spring sport, yeah, exactly.
Well, if you're a summer athlete, it's, it's because you can't play the summer sport and that doesn't count your days.
Yep.
Then the days don't start till fall when you start school.
So if you transfer in, in the summer from Waverly and you want to go out for a track in the spring, does the ninety days start in the fall? Or does it start in the spring?
In the fall, the first day of school.
First day enrollment.
So now it's totally unequal by sport.
Yep. It is.
So, how? How the, uh, district athletic director explained it, it's, it affects winter sports. More than, worse, the worst, more than any other sport.
The hardest for the middle, for the middle of the year.
If you transfer in the summertime, you can still run track, play soccer, play baseball for that next, for that school year, for that school year. But you couldn't play football, volleyball, wrestle, basketball. So it affects the winter sports.
Basketball starts within ninety days.
Yes. Second week in November. If you transfer right in, you're almost.
Basically semester.
Yeah, and then you could move to the, and you could play JV and then move to varsity.
You're almost, early January if you're eligible.
Yep.
Summer, depending on where, the start of school year is so late now, because we're so pushed back to right before the Memorial Labor Day for a start. You know, we used to, we had two more weeks when we supported schedule ahead. You had two more weeks in August to help that, but now it's.
Okay.
That's another project for you, Lyle.
I don't like it.
Now.
All right, so, well, those were our first readings for this evening. I would like to ask the board if we can now go back to item B, which is our new partnership recognition with Elk Run Preschool. Do I have all my players here now? Yay! Would you guys like to come forward so we can recognize you? I don't know if anybody out there is going to take a picture of this. I need to. Okay. Look, I made it happen. So, all right, Mandy.
Um, so Evans Crossing Pharmacy.
Can you make sure that the little green light is on? Hit that button that says push. Okay. Just make sure you're a little bit closer to it. There you go.
Evans, Evans Crossing Pharmacy in Evansdale and Frost Tax Far-, Frost Tax in Evansdale are our two new partners, partners in education. We have Wes with us tonight. He is with Evans Crossing Pharmacy.
Excellent. Welcome, Wes.
Thank you.
Smile big. Oh, hold on. I know, see? Hold on, Dr. Lindman, you're next.
If we, well, if you all just want to take a picture together, we can take the picture.
Yeah. Get it all in there. Thank you, and I just, um.
Just wondered if you'd want to say a few words.
You don't have to, but.
Partner with them and.
Sure.
And we're so thankful for our partners in education. So I just want to thank you for being here tonight and give you the, give you the voice to, to say what you like, so.
Sure, well, you're welcome. Um, so I was at Greenwood Drug for five years before going out to Evansdale, um, at Evans Crossing Pharmacy. And I got to see the cool things that we would do with Lowell while I was there. Um, and so, so Bob thought it would be a good idea for me to kind of get into the same situation that they had over there. It'll be a little different with the preschool than it wa-, than it was with the elementary school, but still excited for an opportunity to be able to, you know, maybe help contribute to these kids' lives a little bit.
Thank you.
Very much so. Thank you. And to Frost Tax Service too, so thank you. Have a great night, you guys. Thanks for being patient. All right, so now we're going to hop back in our agenda to the financial information, which is item N on page sixty-one. And this is for information only, but I'm going to turn it over to Michael Coughlin, our chief financial officer.
I just want to direct your attention to a couple of the exhibits that you can look at on page sixty-five. Is a statement of revenues and expenditures. Uh, the trend for the general fund is the first five columns and then the current year is the yellow shaded one. So you can see that we've, to this point through the end of February, we've had seventy-four million dollars in revenue, which is, um, very similar, if not almost exact, to what the trend has been the last four years before that. And then the, the related expenditures, uh, they do vary a little bit between the different categories. Um, but, um, overall fifty-four percent of the budget is right on target of what we have been doing the last four years. Um, and then I wanted to also just have you, uh, notice the graphs on page seventy-one. I think they always say a lot. It just gives you a, a solid picture of where we are cash-wise in the bank, that, uh, things are very stable. But I did want to go to page seventy-two. And this is also a report that deals with, um, the unspent balance for the annual amount. That's number one at the top. And through projections for the whole year, it looks like our unspent balance is going to drop a little bit, and that's what was planned. So it's looking like it'll go from fourteen percent to just under thirteen percent. So if you look at the green, uh, the acceptable level based on the school board association's uh, recommendation is between five and fifteen percent, not to, not to exceed twenty-five percent. Uh, and we are right in, uh, the, the upper level of the five to fifteen percent. And if you look through the policies, um, this is one of the policies that is in your first reading, that we used to have, um, an acceptable level of five percent. And the rec-, what I'm recommending for your consideration on that is to move to ten to fifteen percent. Um, I think it is healthy that we are, uh, a little higher than the five percent because it wouldn't take much to get us into a concerning situation. So, um, that's how you read, uh, number one. That's for the whole year or with the carryover. So it's our total, total unspent balance. Uh, number two is just for the current year. And what it is showing, uh, on that is that the formula generates without the carryover, a hundred and thirty-three million dollars of spending authorization. And our budget is at a hundred and thirty-five million, so a little bit more than that. So it shows that we're spending a hundred and one percent of the, uh, budget that we have available. Uh, what's projected to date, and I've talked about that before, it's really hard to hit a projected number because some things happen. Uh, for instance, tuition out that we pay to other districts comes late in the year. Um, so that's a little harder to just project across twelve months. But what they say in the green is once you hit an acceptable level of where you want your unspent balance to stay, then your budget should match your expenditures. So it stays at about a hundred percent. And you can see that in the previous years, um, the gray right above the green, we were a little under a hundred percent. And that's what made it go up every year. And now in the current year, the budgeted numbers are a little over a hundred percent. So that will bring it down a little bit. So that's just an annual look at the same authority numbers. And then number three in the middle is the solvency ratio, which is more, uh, the case of the cash in the bank. And because we are, uh, expending a little more of our budget than past years, we are expecting that to drop a little bit from sixteen percent to just under fourteen percent. But those are trends at the current time and, uh, we basically are now halfway through the year with the major expenses, which are salaries. So when you think about teachers, starting in September, February is six months. So that's really kind of a halfway point. So if you're sitting right around fifty percent or a little over, that's right on target. And you can see that that's been our history over the last several years. So these are just some different reports. As you're looking at them, you can kind of see where, um, past history and the trend going forward for this year, how we're sitting. Rather than me just telling you, everything looks good, these are the trends that show we are right on target to the previous years.
So you're projecting all the existing contracts out to the end of the year?
Yes.
Correct. No resignations, no new hire?
So their contracts are actually through the end of school, but then we pay June, July, and August, summer paychecks, and those are all included in these numbers.
Okay.
Could you tell me, um, under the certified budget comparison, can you tell me what other might be? Um, instructions, support services, non-instructional programs, and then number fifty-two says other? Just give me one example of other.
Those are paying for the bonds.
Got it. Thank you.
So they're not really a cost. They're, you know, we're getting the revenue through the sales tax.
Okay.
Anything further for Michael? I love the colored graphs. They always make me happy. So. All right. Thank you, Michael. I will look forward to, if we have a policy coming forward eventually about the change to the solvency ratio or the.
Yeah, that's actually in that first reading that you just went over.
Oh, it is. That's right, it is. I read it and then didn't realize it was already in there, so. Got it. Fiscal management goals, got it. All right. The next item on our agenda then is our superintendent's report. So I will turn it over to Dr. Lindman. Hi, two items tonight. Um, the first one is, uh, I wanted to make a comment about junior achievement. Tonight on the, on page, I think it was item G maybe. You approved through the consent agenda, uh, an agreement with, with junior achievement of Eastern Iowa to provide, uh, services to our kindergarteners through twelfth graders. Uh, I just wanted to, I guess maybe just to comment and to thank people for participating in our junior achievement collaborative partnership. Each year, we have hundreds of volunteers who come in and work with our students in, in every grade, in every single grade, and work on financial literacy, work readiness, entrepreneurship. Um, and so these volunteers will come in and they'll work maybe, you know, some of the units are five weeks, some of them are six weeks. And so the, a volunteer from the community will come up and work alongside a teacher for five weeks, once a week, and they will work through a, a curriculum that's really so- solid. I had the opportunity this year to, I actually volunteered to be, to do one of the classes. And so it was wonderful. I was assigned to a fourth grade in Lowell. And, um, that was before the, the roof issue. So I was actually in the building of Lowell, and it was absolutely fantastic. It was a great way for me to get really hands-on with the, the curriculum. I loved it. I absolutely loved it. And so I, I just did it because I wanted to be able to say, I know what, and I wanted to experience it. And so it was an, an amazing, um, experience. And so I always want to mention the, the MOA because I know that they do, we do pay a portion of the, um, the amount that it costs, but we, it's probably not even half of what, because the rest of it comes from people who donate to JA. And then, of course, all the volunteers are, are voluntary. Um, they, they come to our building and, and work at no cost to us. And so it's kind of a win-win though, because our students greatly benefit from that. The curriculum's really solid. We're using quite a bit. If Jeff Frost were still here, I would have asked him to address that too. Um, we're using quite a bit of it in the career center. Um, the curriculum, they're giving it to us at no cost, and it's just really amazing work. But the other piece of it is that we get volunteers who come into our buildings who work alongside of us. What a great, great PR piece and, and have them see how amazing our kids are. So I think they're still looking for a few volunteers to finish out the slots for the, um, spring. So if anybody's interested, I think that would be a great opportunity. And then the second thing I wanted to, um, mention was, I wanted to go back just a moment to the donation from Veridian Credit Union. And so, and the only reason I did is because Angela Weekly walked in. And so Angela, come up just a second. I wanted to just give you a moment to answer one question. So I'll talk, you walk slowly and I'll talk and you can think about the answer. The, the, I just wanted Angela to talk about the reason why you would support a summer school program that allows our students to try out various pathways at middle school age. Um, the, the choice that Veridian made to fund this, and, and you weren't here when we talked about it, but the board was extremely, um, proud and grateful for the donation that would, would, um, allow us to have this camp this summer. So why would Veridian support a project like this in our community?
That's a great question, and, and I'm hoping some of our members are listening. Um, so we're a financial cooperative, meaning that we're owned by all of our members, and we know that our community is as strong as the members of our community. We think the Waterloo Career Center is an, an awesome avenue for getting some of those, um, talents that we aren't able to get right now because everybody is looking for employment. Like, we're hiring over a hundred people right now, and we are struggling to get them. Um, and so we want to fill those seats. Um, and we can do that by going back. And I always, I keep telling the CEO, what can we, he wants us to figure out, how can we keep the babies out of the water, the social service, um, component? So sometimes it goes back to middle school. It may be back in the elementary school. We volunteer for JA often in making sure that these kids have the resources. They need to be productive members in our community. And we, we believe that our members would want that. And so that's why we think it's a, a great opportunity. And I'm glad I got to hear Michael's presentation. I just wish I could have seen all the colors. That's what I miss from the school board.
Yeah, right.
It's like, so, yeah, so I, I apologize. I also forgot about the switch to six after spring break.
You're just.
I mean, to five, so.
Yeah. No, we are, we are appreciative.
Very thankful.
Yeah, so I just wanted you to come up here and, and just so we could, we could express, um, there was ama-, there were amazing things that were said. And, um, it was fun for us to learn more about the camp and to gear up for that. So thank you for being a part of that, especially the funding piece of it.
Well, thank you for letting us be a part of it and letting me come up late. I appreciate that.
No, it's great.
Thank you for all of the work that you guys are doing in our community, making it stronger.
You can bring us checks anytime. I don't care if they're late. We'll take them anytime.
It's not my money, it's the members' money, so.
Well, thank you.
Most of you. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. That concludes my report. All right. I'm going to start down here to my left tonight with India, with board comments.
Uh, yes, I actually just want to note that this Friday is the Diversity in STEM Conference at Hawkeye. Um, this is really going to give kids a great opportunity to hear a wonderful speaker. Um, I want to make sure I get his name right. Uh, former NASA scientist, Con- Contesse Simmons, I think. Cantus, excuse me. Um, he's going to come speak, um, about just STEM and careers and, um, just, uh, still on that same path that we at Waterloo Schools are going with. And so if we get the opportunity to send some students, please do. Um, because I think it's going to be great, as always, just kind of pushing that STEM career and how it can, it's still very important for all our students to be participating, to participate in, so, yep. Um, Diversity STEM is Friday from eight-thirty to two-thirty. Uh, some co- costs may involve, but I think that might be covered in some aspect for students, but otherwise, oh, excuse me, students are free. Students are free, yeah. Go ahead. That's it.
And it's right on Hawkeye's campus.
Correct, it is.
Yep, great. Jessie?
Yeah, I just, uh, want to thank the, uh, Westside Band. I was at a Central plus West Band concert, or a few nights ago, or a couple of weeks ago. But it's nice seeing the high school reach out and perform with the, the middle school students and try to encourage them to stay with the music stuff as they grow old or something. And it was some neat, some neat programming there, some.
Thank you. Sue?
Well, I just wanted to comment just briefly about the, um, testing that we were afforded this evening and thank, um, Dr. Mohorn and dear, Dr., is it Dr. Hannah? Dear, no, dear and Hannah. Dear, no, Darren Hannah. Sorry. Just Darren, who's leaving us, but anyhow, um, um, and just how, um, patient are, and I guess to the forefront that our district has been in getting this out to our staff and, and working with parameters that aren't actually, in my opinion, fair parameters. We don't know what, um, we're going to be tested on, graded on, how this will all work, but we're not bucking any of that. We're going forward, and I appreciate those efforts of, um, um, educating the teachers, the staff. And now we are on the forefront of educating parents and, um, and I just know that our students are going to rock it, because our students are, um, resilient and good at a computer, and I'm not so good.
Rhonda?
Yes, to underscore what Sue was, um, saying, on, uh, Tuesday, March twenty-sixth, from five-thirty to seven-thirty, Lincoln Elementary will be having a Let's Talk About Testing. That's taco. Get it? Let's talk about, but it's taco, okay, yeah. If you ever have to explain a joke, it's not that funny, but, but that's where parents are going to learn about the new state assessment. So it's very important, if you want to learn more about what we're doing and how we're doing it, please make sure you connect with your building administrator or your, your teachers. Again, that's Tuesday, March twenty-sixth, from five-thirty to seven-thirty.
And nobody stole it. You got to say it.
I was looking at, I was giving Sue the evil eye.
You're not saying this, she got dibs, so, okay, Aster.
Thank you, Shelly. As spring break has passed and we're winding down the school year, I just wanted to remind um, all the seniors that are graduating, make sure you fill out, uh, your scholarship applications. Uh, don't forget, uh, talk to your school counselor. Um, they should be in the guidance office, I believe. So just make sure you're getting those scholarship applications filled out, uh, to get some of that money for school.
I just have a follow-up question on the JA, particularly the high school programs. Entrepreneurial, career success, company program, you can, these are all, uh, registered trademarked, uh, courses. Uh, and then you mentioned Jeff Frost. Are, are, do these fit? Do they integrate well with our Career Center offerings? And is there an opportunity to maybe add a little or, or pull them even tighter together than what they normally would be?
Yeah, we have actually, we have an excellent, uh, relationship with Junior Achievement, um, of Eastern Iowa. We, I, I, actually, they tell us that we are a premier district, although I know they work with other districts as well, but um, because of our, our relationship with them, we have been really on the, the cutting edge of some of the curriculum work, and so we have had the permission and the allowance to pick and choose some of the pieces of it that really fit the curriculum that we have. And so recently, for example, I think everyone knows that the Hawkeye classes, uh, the, the classes that we offer at the Waterloo Career Center articulate with community colleges, with the majority of them articulating with Hawkeye Community College. So because we will be adding a financial class or a financial pathway this fall, we actually worked through Junior Achievement and through Hawkeye to have them looking at the JA curriculum to see which pieces of it would contribute to the, the coursework for particular classes at the college level. And I think, I think, um, Hawkeye is still working on that right now, but we were really encouraged to, to see that there's a triangulation of partnerships between that. So we have, we've really been, you can use it, a canned program, you can use it start to finish and not deviate from that at all. But you also have the, the liberties to pick and choose what fits the standards and benchmarks that we're teaching, and that's really what we're doing at the high school. We may use, if it's a a five-week program, we may use three of the lessons. We may use all of the lessons. We may use the whole entire semester. So, I think, I feel really grateful to Junior Achievement for allowing us to do that, because honestly, the curriculum is excellent, and the materials are excellent. Um, I saw that firsthand by teaching, um, at the elementary level. I'm going to, I'm going to continue to volunteer and actually teach at different grade levels, because I, I mean, a volunteer, many volunteers will do the same grade level. They'll volunteer for fourth grade every year for the, you know, twenty years, because they get really familiar with the curriculum. But other people might, might switch, and that's what I'm going to do, because I want to try out like a seventh-grade curriculum. I want to try out a ninth-grade curriculum just to see. So, um, that, that's the way that we're using it to really fit our needs, and we are, we're grateful for them, because again, that is funded. We do contribute to that, but that is funded primarily by volunteers, by, by people who donate to Junior Achievement, so it's, it's been very, very helpful.
Thank you.
Was that the answer you were hoping?
Yes.
I thought so.
You finally got an answer, Lyle.
I was just asked if I could mention, um, the Food Bank, does their Empty Bowls fundraiser, and they've come before us several times in the past, and so that event is happening this coming Friday, I believe. But I don't have, I believe it's at the Five Sullivan Brothers. I'm just trying to get to the information. Okay, there we go. Yeah, I just don't have the right. I'm finding every other Empty Bowls fundraiser than that, so. Um, I just wanted to say a couple of quick things. I was able to, on Friday, attend the First Robotics, uh, FRC competition up at McLeod, and it was awesome. And I know for a fact that one of our teams, our Unity for Tech team, advanced to the next round up in Milwaukee this weekend, so yay to them. And if there's another Waterloo team that advanced and I don't know it yet, I'm sorry if I missed you. I'll announce you the next time. Um, and then I also just want to remind people, before our next board meeting, uh, a week from Thursday, we have our, um, we have our, um, Culture Fest, which happens at the Waterloo Center for the Arts, and it's a great way to see all of the amazing things that are happening in all the different cultures that intersect in our community. And back to the Empty Bowls fundraiser, it is this Friday night from six to nine PM at the Five Sullivan Brothers Convention Center. So if you're available to head to that for the Northeast Iowa Food Bank, that would be wonderful. So, um, our next meeting will be here in the boardroom on April eighth. And if there is nothing further to come before the board, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Alright, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those who oppose, same sign. Chair votes aye. We're adjourned. Good evening.